Good afternoon, welcome to our two-by-two meeting. It is now, what time are we at?
4:36.
4:36, we are starting our meeting. Call to order. I'm going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have roll call?
Councilmember Matulak.
Present.
President Fox.
Present.
Vice President Gamboy.
Present.
We have a quorum with Mayor Source absent.
Thank you. For Agenda Item 4, Community Forum.
Thank you Chair, yes, we do have public speakers who have signed up. I've also have started a two-minute timer, which is reflected on the top-left corner of your screen, for interested parties to sign up for the Community Forum. At this time, I will start calling off the names of those in person, as well as, once those are concluded, we will move forward to the speakers who are online. Chair, just so I know, how many minutes are we allowing the speakers?
We have other parties using this room after, correct?
Yes.
So our meeting is limited in time. So because our meeting is limited, and there's other people going to be using this room after us, we cannot be late, how many do we have so far?
Currently, we have six in-person speakers and one online speaker.
So two minutes each, that's 14 minutes, not to exceed 15 minutes. Okay, not to exceed 15 minutes.
So just to confirm, two minutes each person?
Yes, but not to exceed 15 minutes, so there'll be no other cards accepted.
Okay. First speaker, Dolores Johnson, please come to the podium, followed by Tasha Johnson, and then Ernie Santos.
Good evening, Councilmembers and members of the Vallejo community. My name is Dolores Johnson, and I am here on behalf of Elite Public Schools, a public charter school that has proudly served Vallejo families with excellence, accountability, and heart. I stand before you because the Vallejo City Unified School District has refused to allow Elite to submit Proposition 2 facilities application, an application that could bring up to $30 million in state funding to modernize and expand learning environments for our children. This decision is not just bureaucratic, it is deeply inequitable. First, the district claimed Elite as a low-performing school. This is simply untrue. Our CAS results clearly show that Elite scholars are performing above or at the same level of many schools in the Solano County. Our students and teachers have worked tirelessly to overcome learning gaps, and their progress proves that high-quality education is happening every single day in Elite Public Schools. Second, the district reported that there are no unhoused students in our grade levels, therefore claiming we do not qualify for facilities funding. That interpretation not only ignores the intent of the State Proposition 2 program, but it also, which is also to ensure that all public school students have access to safe, functional, and equitable learning spaces, but it also dismisses the lived experiences of families who deserve better environments for their children. Third, while the district refuses to extend our facilities agreement to a 40-year term, it continues to maintain a 97-year lease agreement with other charter operators like MIT and Griffith Academy, and the documents that you all have, you can reread that in case you forgot. That inconsistency is not only unfair, it signals a troubling double standard that undermines public trust and the spirit of collaboration this city deserves. But here's the bigger picture. If granted the ability to submit the application, Elite could secure up to $30 million in state funding.
Time.
That money could not only cost the district, would not cost the district a single dollar, those funds would allow us to modern-
Next speaker is Tasha Johnson.
Okay. We can limit now, not as many speakers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and if you want to take some time away from me, you can, for her, for her overage, you can have it, it won't take me that long. I believe that you already know why we're here, I believe that you already have the information. You all are intelligent elected leaders, so I'm not going to believe that the questions you asked at the board meeting are legit. I think that you know exactly what you're being asked. I think that you have all of the information, and you know exactly how it should be answered. So I'm not going to use my time to play this game with you. What I am going to tell you and remind you is that you all have elected seats. And I know at the board meeting, Mr. President Fox, he alluded to the fact that we didn't have a lot of homeownership amongst our families, which irritated a lot of our families, but what they do stand on is whether they own homes or not, they are all registered voters. So, the equity amongst the children in District 3 is not fair. So as leaders, I challenge you to find a way to balance it out. Prop 2 will help you do that. It not only will help you balance it out, but it will help, it will help the community understand that you are here for all the children. Because right now, the equity is not balanced. You're giving privilege to MIT while you're punishing Elite. I'm not understanding why that is, if you're supposed to be here for all the children, it should be all the children, not just some of the children, or the children that you deem fit, or the children that happen to look like you all. All the children are children of Vallejo. We support all the children, and if you all, as a board, cannot do that, then we will force to replace you with people who are willing to do that. And I think when Elite was established in 2019, Mr. Fox, you were coming in, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. Maybe you've been here too long, I'm not sure. But, we replaced you all once before, and we are prepared to replace you all again. It's not fair that we have to fight and sue for everything we need for the kids at Elite Public School. Pull it together as elected leaders.
Ermani Santos.
Alright, good afternoon. Obviously, Ermani Santos, Assistant CEO at Elite Public Schools. I'm sure some of the other speakers will be hitting you with some more facts, I'm just going to give you a little perspective. We've been in this room once before, when we're trying to fight for our high school, and at one of the meetings, I talked about a concept of moving the goalpost, right? During that time. So here we are now, fighting for this Prop 2 money, which we shouldn't even have to fight for, right? We qualify, the money is ours, it's for the kids, and so that's all we're asking for. I'm thinking about responses to the emails where we were trying to get the protocols followed, and we got one response. We show up to a board meeting, we got a different response, right? One was, "We're underachieving," then it became "financial." Why do we continue to move the goalpost, right? If it is what it is, then say that's what it is. We can't say one thing, and then go back and say, "Oh, I should have said that, let me think about a better response for that," right? So if your stance is, "We're underachieving," stand on that, right? Because the data will come out, and you will see that we've grown. Every year we've been in existence, and we had a significant growth this year. Please don't continue to move the goalposts. It is, if that's what you're standing on, stand on that, say it with your chest, right? "Oh, that didn't work, so let me go, oh, it's financial. Oh, we can't go into a lease that long." Well, we got two different examples, we're 40, 40-year leases, 97-year leases. This is a 30, so that only applies to Elite. I just want to think about this. As you guys are commenting, think about the young people, and how your words will have an impact. Live and direct in a board meeting, we're calling our students "underachieving," which is not true. We have impact on young people, and as adults, that should never come out your mouth. We should be encouraging these young people. Stop moving the goalposts.
Jasmine Taylor, followed by Vanessa Oden, and then Ramona Bishop.
Hello. Hello, my name is Jasmine Taylor. I am a TK teacher at Elite Public Schools. Not only am I a teacher, but I'm also a parent. This is my son, Brendan Taylor, a ninth grader at Elite Public School. He just took the CAS test for eighth grade, where he exceeded the grade level for math, met the grade level for ELA. Not only because of this, his mind has been open where he wants to be, a sports attorney. Not only is that, but he also plays baseball. So I want you to look at this young man, who has a 3.8 GPA. When you're thinking about not helping Elite Public School, you're undermining students, and this is one of them, that you're saying is not good enough, when he is every day. Sir, I'm talking, you should be looking at me, not back there. Mr. Fox, Mr. Fox, this is the reason, this is what I'm saying, this is total disrespect. This young man is here representing the school, and I'm talking, and I should have everybody's attention, not your attention on the back. But I want y'all to think about this, not only just this student, but all these students are who you're going to tell no to, or who you told no to. And Mr. Fox, I do own my house, as a matter of fact, I just paid my taxes and received a notification of how much my taxes go to the school board, or go to schools, the educational tax. Just because I don't look like you, doesn't mean I don't pay taxes, and I don't own my home. I have owned my home since 1998. I've been in the city of Vallejo, owning a home and paying taxes. No criminal record at all.
Vanessa Oden.
Good evening. Before I begin, I need everyone to look at me, because if I came out here, I expected, especially as each one of you is an elected official by the people of Vallejo, thank you. My name is Vanessa Oden, I'm a proud Elite parent, a proud Latina, and a representative of Black and Brown families who make Vallejo the soul of this city. I'm also very proud to be the first Spanish-speaking administrator at Elite. Let's be real, this is not your money, this is state money. And these are not just other children, these are Vallejo children. And I'm here to say, not for you to overlook, we are here standing in the gap, raising scholars, leaders, and dreamers in a system that too often forgets their worth. Our son is performing at grade level for the ELA standards. He marked blue, and he's not alone, he's thriving. And I'm offended by the narrative that our students are failing. They are not failing, but the system is failing. Bureaucracy, red tape, hidden alliances have no place in the education of our children. Prop 2 funding is not a favor, it's a moral obligation. This is justice, and the promise that Vallejo will never settle when it comes to less than for its children. These children are not statistics. They deserve classrooms that inspire, teachers that are equipped, and leaders, including all of you, that are brave enough to look people in the eye, and look at the students that you want to deny. Do right by our families, tear down the red tape, release what belongs to our children, because el futuro de Vallejo depende en ellos. The future of Vallejo depends in them, and in you, and in us. For our children, for Vallejo, without excuse, with hope. Do right by our children, cut the red tape, and we are here to make history.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Ramona Bishop, and I am the visionary and CEO of Elite Public Schools. And I appreciate your kind attention and your eye contact at this moment. I just wanted to say, City Councilmember Matulak and President Fox, we invited you to come and speak with our parents and our community, so that we could work in collaboration with you. Because whereas Superintendent Aurelio, really as was made very clear to us during your school board meeting, you don't represent clearly our charter school students. So perhaps we should open up this venue to have an Elite representative sitting here.
Yes.
And I'm sure that that Elite representative would look people in the eye when they are speaking. Let me just say that as the former superintendent of Vallejo City Unified School District, I wish every child well. I want all systems to do well. I don't want to have educators that speak down or speak negatively about students or school systems. But let me be clear, that Elite is number one in student achievement in mathematics for Black students. Elite is number one across the county. Elite is number one in student performance for English learners across the county. I didn't just say for Vallejo, across the county. And so this kind of a school, a school that in six years has been able to eliminate the opportunity gap, should have special consideration in your eyes. Even if your child never comes across the doorsteps of Elite. Let us be clear, that we are here, we are here to stay, and this $15 million, $30 million belongs to us. Thank you.
And online speaker, Jeremy Geronimo, please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Hello, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jeremy Geronimo. I can't turn on my camera for some reason, but I'm a proud parent of two students at Elite Public Schools. I've been in Vallejo since I was two years old. I'm 43 years old right now. So, went to Loma Vista, went to Solano Junior High, went to, graduated Vallejo, class of 2000. I'm from Vallejo, just like the montage said in the beginning of this video on the Zoom. I want to go over the bigger picture here, because this is pretty much creating a win-win-win for Vallejo City Unified School District, Elite Public Schools, and, and the children of Vallejo, the city of Vallejo. So Elite, with this, Elite can secure up to $30 million in state funding, money that could not, not cost the district or city a single dollar. Those funds would allow us to modernize existing facilities, or even purchase one of the district's sites that has already been designated for closure. That kind of partnership would allow us to pour resources back into Vallejo City Unified School District, enabling the district to reinvest and proceed, the proceeds with, from such a sale, directly into its remaining schools, classrooms, teachers. Everyone benefits from this, guys. You know, the district students, the charter students, Councilmember Matulak. There are 600-plus students at this school, and all of them will benefit, plus the money would go to, into the other schools in the rest of the, of the city. So, this is not a competition, this is a collaboration. It's a win-win opportunity for Vallejo's children. Councilmembers, we are simply asking for fairness. The right to submit an application by the October 30th deadline, so that the state of California can review it on its merits. Denying what, that right is not rooted in equity, and it deprives Vallejo families of the educational resources they deserve. Let's put politics aside, and focus on what matters most, our kids.
Time. And that's all our speakers at this time, Chair.
No justice?
Thank you.
No peace?
No money?
No peace.
No justice?
No peace.
No money?
No peace.
No justice?
No peace.
No money?
No peace.
Low performing?
No way.
Low performing?
No way, lead prices every day.
Low performing?
No way, lead prices every day.
What do we want?
Equal funding.
What do we want it?
Now.
What do we want?
Equal funding.
What do we want it?
Now.
What do we want?
Equal funding.
What do we want it?
Now.
No justice?
No peace.
No money?
No peace.
No justice?
No peace.
No money?
No peace.
Low performing?
No way, lead prices every day.
Low performing?
No way, lead prices every day.
At this time, we are taking a recess. Not the Valeos months.
At this time, we are taking a recess.
All right, we're going to continue our meeting. Once Councilman Matulik returns. Can we please have roll call?
Councilmember Matulik.
Present.
President Fox.
Present.
Vice President Gamboy.
Present.
We have a quorum with Mayor Source absent.
All right, our next agenda item is item six, presentations and... ...commotions, or five, 5A? All right. Approval of the agenda. Vice President Amboy?
I'd like to make motion to approve consent item 5A.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Matulik.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Vice President Gamboy.
Aye.
Motion passes with Mayor Source absent.
Thank you. Agenda item six, are there any presentations? All right, with that then we're going to agenda item seven, inter-agencies. GVRD, I think I saw Gabe Lanus. Is Mr. Lanus still here? Okay. Chief Todd, do you have any updates?
Good afternoon, President Fox, board members. I just have some really quick updates. I know Sergeant Hollis is with me here today. We're going to talk a little bit about some immigration activity and how it relates to our community as well as the schools. Couple of quick updates I have for public safety. We just recently received the rest of the security towers. So these towers are used to not only deter crime but also help us record and do follow-up investigation on crimes that occur. So we have currently two of these towers being utilized and we just deployed five more. So a couple of these towers are going to be placed strategically to deal with dumping some potentially sex traffic behavior. So we're looking forward to seeing how this is going to reduce some of the quality of life concerns in our community. Second thing is, I just want to remind you all that as of, I think, last month, maybe a month and a half ago, we had reassigned one officer back to traffic. And so as we start building back our traffic unit, we're going to be doing more traffic enforcement throughout the city, but also planning for futures safe walk, safe travels to school days for awareness campaigns. That is going to be also augmented with our POP team, which is also recently formed. That is the problem-oriented policing team. So it's a team of four officers that are proactively addressing crime trends as well as quality of life concerns throughout our city. And then lastly, we're just working through some of the logistics with the sheriff partnership. So that partnership is still slated to occur, starting in January, so January 2026 to January 2027, the sheriff deputies will be assisting us with additional public safety services. So I'm going to turn this over to Sergeant Hollis, just to talk about a couple of immigration concerns.
Hello, everyone. So of course, protecting immigrant communities fosters trust and encourages crime reporting. So fear of deportation can undermine the public safety by discouraging cooperation with the law enforcement. So VPD policy support public safety and constitutional rights. Just want to confirm that VPD has zero tolerance of bias-free policing policy. Discrimination based on factors such as race, religion, color, ethnicity, national origin, age, gender, or sexual orientation is strictly prohibited. And VPD enforces all state and local laws regardless of individuals' immigration rights status. And VPD prioritizes crime prevention and public safety, not immigration enforcement. VPD will never use ICE in manners of interpreters. And VPD does not have the authority to enforce any federal laws. And just wanted to also emphasize that in 2017, VPD partnered with the city attorney at the time, Ms. Claudia Contini, and she helped us revamp our immigration policy to become more progressive and meet the needs of our involving community. Ms. Cortana later retired from the Vallejo, City of Vallejo, and became an immigration attorney with the Justice Diversity Center of the Bar Association of San Francisco. So we are very committed to protecting everyone in our community.
Thank you, Sergeant Hollis. And I just wanted to update, last school season, we did an engagement campaign, one of the high schools, in just collaborating with the superintendent and some of the school faculty. If the need exists for us to do another one, we are more than happy to do another one. Just to raise awareness again and just alert the students as well as the parents on what the immigration policies are for the Vallejo Police Department. To date, we have not seen a lot of immigration activity here in our city. I know that throughout the region, there is kind of a buildup in some of the surrounding cities in the Bay Area. We are not seeing that here. So fortunately, that has not occurred. However, if it does, I think the relationship we have with our schools and other city leadership can be very, can be activated very quickly to be able to distill some of those fears. So with that, I can answer any questions you guys may have.
Vice President Amboy?
The question I have, it actually, it's not related to what you just spoke to earlier, but it's something I was just thinking about. Years ago, Vallejo PD had a, like a scout program with the school district. Is there anything, is it something that we can probably bring up and resurrect again? Because I would love to see, I mean, if we have the RACI program at VCUSD, would love to see something with the Vallejo PD as well.
Yes, currently, we have the Explorer Program where we have approximately four students with VCUSD that are, they come to the police department, I believe, every weekend and do community hours and learn all the ins and outs of public safety. I know just recently, we certified the four of them in CPR. I know most recently also, they were involved in the Sarna Soccer League startup. So they are pretty active. Some of the other things that I would also like to bring up is, we're also working with Cave Elementary. We just partnered up with them to do the Day of the Dead. That's going to be on November 5th. We're really excited about that. And she just, the principal, Ms. Hernandez, just gave us the green light to have an open house at Cave Elementary. So what we're going to do is, we're going to bring the canines, the drones, all the cool cars, all the things that make the bells and whistles go off and show the kids what public safety is and that, you know, this is a friendly environment and we are here for them and the parents. So that's another thing that we're pretty excited about. And I've been talking to Ms. Heather, and we're going to start incorporating a public safety committee pathway within the schools. So maybe we can, not only, because right now we have the Jesse Bethel Law Academy, now we need to bring that same pathway into Vallejo High. So those are some of the up and coming things that we're excited about.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you both for your reports. We really appreciate you and all that you do. And, oh, you have a question, trustee?
Is it on? Okay. Good evening. Thank you guys so much for the information. This is just kind of a question I've been having this past week, especially right now since we've heard a lot about National Guard and immigration. So are you guys looking into maybe having a partnership with the school district to bring some sort of training for the kids in case there is a situation like that where you do encounter somebody in danger or you find yourself in danger? Because I feel like not many people are aware of it, not many people are educated, not many people know that they have rights, even as an immigrant. People are just not aware. So it would be great to bring that useful information from the kids to the parents and maybe eventually involve the parents.
That's a great idea, and I really appreciate that. That is something that I will bring to VCUSD and try to make that happen. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Hollis. Thank you, Chief Todd. Any other inter-agencies? I think we got, okay. Discussion items, 8A, Mare Island Causeway Bridge Construction.
Good afternoon, city council members and board members. The traffic is flowing on the Mare Island. We have made it as one-way right now. So if you have any questions or concerns about the traffic.
So Sam is, Kumar is one of our capital planning engineers, and he's working on the Mare Island Causeway Bridge. Sam, can you please remind us the timeframe for the construction project and when the two-day absolute closure is going to be?
The two-day bridge closure has been updated as November 5th and 6th.
And when will the project be completed?
Right now, it is slated to be completed January 5th, 2027.
So I just want to say, you know, I want to commend you and the city for the change in the traffic flow, significant difference that we noticed, both for kids getting to school and employees getting to work on Mare Island. We are dreading the two-day closure, however. That is, there's no way to avoid that for us, and we're trying to see if there's a way we can shuttle kids, you know, some way to ease the pain for those two days. We're also closely going to monitor our attendance those two days because if it adversely affects attendance, we might be able to recoup some of that funding from the state. Some things are just out of our control. But as far as the change, it was a welcome change, and we really appreciate that it was done, and I drive it every day and it flows. So unless, of course, there's a ship coming and then you're stuck.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Any questions? Oh, Councilman Matulik?
And so I would like to give kudos to Assistant Superintendent Chamberlain. That actually started an email thread with myself and with the city manager, sharing the concerns, because obviously, we weren't aware of anything at that point, and this is about, what, about a month ago? And so through that, through that email and through this collaboration, we were able to come to a viable solution. So I just want to applaud Assistant Superintendent Chamberlain for starting that. And that speaks to the collaboration that I think that has been inherent, but it's those type of examples between the city and VCUSD that shine through as far as the success that we're able to have just through having conversations and collaboration.
Thank you. Thank you for your update.
Thank you.
We're now on to 8B, Rollingwood Avenue Subdivision Entitlements.
Hello. My name is Kristen Pollitt. I am the Director of Planning and Development Services for the City of Vallejo. Quick update regarding the Rollingwood subdivision. This is a project at 201 Rollingwood Drive for 130 single-family, single-unit dwelling, single-family dwelling units. Anyways, just to give you an update of where we're at with this, we had a hearing before the planning commission that was originally scheduled for October 6th. However, we did have to continue that item. We needed some additional time to work through some of the details of a couple of conditions of approval primarily related to water. We are nearing close to resolution of those items. We have rescheduled the hearing for November 3rd, and we are feeling pretty confident that we will be able to hold that hearing. It's going to happen soon, so that's where we're at.
So you think all the water concerns are being cleared up?
We have not heard back from the applicant yet, but we have shared, we've been corresponding back and forth, so it's on the right path.
Thank you. Is there anything that we need to do to try to help the path stay going forward?
At this point, I don't think so. I think it's really just come down to the water condition as the last item that we need to kind of solidify.
Okay. Any comments or questions? We appreciate your report, and we appreciate everything you're doing to try to help get a speedator, whatever you can do to get this going and get it through. Thank you.
No problem.
It's been a lot of years. All right, now we're down to Nebraska Street Closure, 8C.
Okay. Well, I'll just jump in on this one, too. I think that there was some information provided that we were trying to figure out what the correct path would be for CEQA compliance in order to put this project in place. I would like to share that we have been able to look at the report prepared by Fair and Peers, and I think we have come to the conclusion that we are supportive of an exemption. So basically, what we're doing right now is just kind of finalizing the project description, and then we could probably have that ready in the next couple of weeks to file a notice of exemption for CEQA if we needed to. But I'll probably defer to Public Works on timing of that, depending upon when the project would move forward.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Fox, council members, and two-by-two board members. Tony Chu, City Traffic Engineer. So updates are funding, of course, where we're going to grab the funding from. I've already asked, you know, Oscar asked me the question, what's the next step? So Public Works on our end, funding first, and then eventually, already got quotes. When Melissa was here, Tigba was here, already got quotes for the pipe gates, so the 40-foot span from either side of it. It'll be installed on basically east of the pool parking lot, basically, so you can route around through that parking lot if they need to make a U-turn on the west end and then the east end. It's going to be right there at intersection on the west leg of Amador Street, so then they could just go straight or, you know, make their way around that way on Amador Street. So that's the basics of that. And then the timing of it, of course, is going to be closed just during school hours, 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM. So it's like similar to the pilot program we had last year about for a month, but then, you know, this will be permanent basis. And of course, if notified, we'll get approval from police and fire as well, right? So hopefully, they're aware of that. They can, you know, make their, you know, emergency routes and plan accordingly. And that's pretty much it. That's not, the timing of it is, it all depends, the contractor, you know, it depends on the contractor, materials they should have onboard, and costs. I've received costs from last year, so the cost is from $14,000 to $20,000 each per location. So double add would be 28 to 40K installed.
And so, Tony, my understanding was that we had been looking to identify grant opportunities or other funding opportunities? Do you say that the $14,000 per gate was the cost for materials and installation?
Correct.
Okay, so for, you know, a little less than $30,000 total. Have we been looking for grants to provide funding for it? And how soon after securing funding could the project be constructed?
With the vendor onboard, that's the main thing. If we already have the vendor onboard, then we, you know, that'd be really, really simple because they already through our city system, and we already have prerequisites for it, and then we get purchase order and everything. So with that, I would say, depending on their schedule, within a month. So that's, it's pretty, pretty quick for them to get it. But for our standpoint, we might, you know, internal encroachment permits and whatnot, that's of course no fee. We'll work with that. And then traffic control, then route everybody around during the process when it's being installed.
And have we had any success in identifying grant funding opportunities?
Still deciding on which ones it would be, though, right now. They have the SS4A, Safe Routes to School, it's Safe Schools for All. That's last quarter through the, what I've heard through the new administration is not going to be pushing that forward for next year. So that funding is going away. So there's other different fundings that we're looking into as well to mitigate this and get this going, obviously, for, you know, everybody involved.
So city staff would appreciate direction or advice from the two-by-two committee regarding sources of funding. If there's the opportunity, of course, or possibility is for the two organizations, the school district and the city, to share the costs, a council member would need to, and that might help us find enough extra resources within our existing city budget to be able to move forward without, without having to find a new source. If that's not possible, and the city is, needs to contemplate funding the entire amount, we'd need some direction from the city council to appropriate funds for that. So happy to get whatever advice or guidance you all would like to provide regarding how to approach a funding solution.
I would definitely like to continue with finding how much in grants. So first, we know how much would that take care of, and then, once we have those numbers, then how do we augment the rest of the, fund the rest of the project? So whenever you can get the final numbers from all the entities of what possibility grant funds are available currently and that could be used.
Okay, understood. I just got to, typically, as usual, is that to look at specifics, read in detail on what's going to be covered by each, because some may be pretty broad, and that some may be pretty specific in nature on what is supposed to be applied to for the funding-wise.
Would you be able to know by next month, by November, which grants would be and how much those would be worth?
Of course.
Okay, and then we can decide, like the same manager, I love his thinking and how he's directing this. Anyways.
Then.
Councilman Matulik, I see, is waiting. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So Mayor Source and I are on the Board of STA and also on committees through STA. So we actually have potential funding sources that we can ask about through STN with Safe Routes to School. So I know they've done micro grants in the past with Safe Routes to School. So those are the type of the questions and kind of inquiries we can have with, through STA and even MTC with Mayor Source being on that board. So we'll, I'll coordinate with Mayor Source on that and see where we can get, if there's any potential funding through that, that we could potentially coordinate with Sydney or with Public Works.
Hopefully, we can get it by the November meeting for all entities if we can.
Yeah, I'll start that conversation.
Thank you. But do you think the total project, I'm kind of confused, is it 14, is it 14 times two or is it 20 times two?
On the low end, it was the 14 times two, and the high end was 20 times two.
Okay.
So of course, we'll go with the lower bidder, but then we'll get, this was up last year's prices, so I informed Oscar that it's going to be, needs to be updated. I'll ask him for additional, you know, new quotes, you know, now, of course.
Thank you very much for all your time and effort, and we're just looking forward to providing a safe area during the school day the best we can.
And there's additional traffic calming as well on Amador Street that I'm looking into as well that should, there's still some funding left over, so just determining which approach to utilize for the intersection just north of that, that crosswalk just north of Amador. It's on Amador, north of Nebraska Street.
Wonderful.
Right where the other exit is on the east side.
Whatever calming activities you think that would be effective, please bring them to us, and then we can, maybe we can talk about that also in November.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, President Fox, city staff.
Through the chair, sorry. We have a member of the public who would like to speak on one of the discussion items. Will you allow it?
Which item?
We don't know. Bridge, the Mare Island Bridge.
It is for one minute?
It's online. It would be, we allowed two for the others, so two minutes.
We're at 5:44 right now, and we have youth coordinator, Vallejo delegates, and reports. I think we have 16 minutes. Okay, quickly.
Okay.
Councilmember Gordon, please unmute yourself and have the floor.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I was reaching out because I wanted to say regarding the bridge, my concerns is, what about the children that have to walk to school? Have we considered that as a concern? And/or parents who need to get to the school district? I'm just making sure that they are thought about and will be able to get to school safely. And the second concern I have is, I want to say thank you so much regarding the closure in front of Vallejo High School, because that has always been my concern. I've been fighting for that since my children went to school there, and they're 28 years old. So I'm happy to hear that we're having this conversation. We don't need anyone to be hurt during school hours. So thank you again. I'm proud of everyone and their leadership in this project.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I apologize. There was one more user who raised their hand. Will you allow it, a speaker?
For which discussion item?
They just raised their hand.
I think at this time, we're, we only have 14 minutes to get through the rest of the agenda. If we have time at the end of the agenda, if they're willing to wait, yes.
Okay.
But at this time, I want to finish the agenda.
Okay.
Because we're, we have another entity trying to use this room. So if they're willing to wait, please wait. Victoria Grace?
Good evening, everyone. Victoria Grace Sparksdale, Youth Coordinator, City of Vallejo. I am here to update you guys on our next Vallejo Youth delegation trip. I am here to update you guys on our next Vallejo Youth Delegation trip. We are going to be attending the National Legos Cities Conference on November 18th through the 21st in Salt Lake City, and applications are in. We had 23 applicants this time around. I appreciate you all for being on the scoring panel. Let me know. I did email you all. Let me know if there's any shifts or we need to find some additional support. We do have VCUSD staff that are also providing some scores. I know it is a difficult task, because we have such great applicants, but please make sure you get those to me by Sunday so that next week, we are able to notify the parents and notify the students. Our goal is to get on the campus next Thursday, October 30th, to present the certificates from the mayor's office, along with some more information. They will hopefully be coming to council for a recognition on November 4th, along with their orientation for the trip. Just to really quickly talk about how we've refined this process over the years, we have added a few different measures to make sure that it's equal and accessible and equitable and just aligned more with the government and civic standards. So, we now only allow 10th through 12th graders to apply. We've added a code of conduct before and during the trip. We have an informational session in case kids want to ask their own questions or need more information about it. We have translated the flyer into Spanish. And this year, because we were finding that we did have to combat AI usage, we added a question around, let us know a personal accomplishment or a personal challenge that you've overcome as a Vallejo youth, as one of the questions on the application. And so, I think you all will find that we've got some real personalized answers, that it's very, it would be very difficult to use AI to answer those questions. So, along with that, just briefly, because I know Gabe wanted to touch on this, we have some Measure P funding that went to GVRD. They just recently opened up their youth team scholarship program. And so, teams that are based in Vallejo have, athletes in Vallejo can apply for some scholarship funding to help access the fields, and we are hoping to keep those teams in Vallejo. And then, I just want to thank Superintendent Orellillo for allowing me to hopefully get in front of your superintendent's advisory council to get a little bit of feedback on our youth council upcoming. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Reports from the committee members. Councilmember Matulik?
Going back, since it's been a long time since we last met, I think the recent one that I can report on is Waterfront Weekland was a success. I know there were several of us that were in the dunk tank, that I think we enjoyed the, getting the nice, cool water on a kind of a warm day. But, yeah, that was a great event that we have, and we have upcoming, we have quite a few events that are upcoming. I know the Day of the Dead, I think that's a great celebration for a lot of communities that are upcoming. And then, I think we also have the Mad Hatter that's going to be upcoming, too. So, those are some of the upcoming events that I want to bring highlight to and look forward to seeing a lot of the community out there for that.
Thank you. Vice President Ambor?
No reported this time.
All right. And then, for myself, just going through a lot with our school closure committees and lots of decisions on that. All right. That's all I have. For Agenda Item 12, Information Calendar, I think we'll wait and see, get information from Mayor Source and all the rest of us who are available for November.
Correct. Rhonda and I will coordinate to make sure Chambers is available, city manager, superintendent, and then we will send dates, hopefully tomorrow, to the members of the two-by-two.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, also, it sounds like we already have a few agenda items already for updates from possible grants and different entities for the Nebraska Street closure for the gates installation. And any other future agenda items other than that that we heard tonight? We'll email them if there are any other than that one. Am I missing any others? We're trying to Orellillo or same manager. We're good? Okay. Is that caller we got through on, let me see what time is it. Yes, we're good. Does the caller still available?
Yes, Chair. The caller still is here. Zoom user, please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Two minutes?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me the two minutes to speak. My point here is in regard to the funding for elite public schools. I was present in the last meeting, and I was extremely disappointed to hear the position from the people that are in charge to lead our city forward. Not permitting, not allowing the funding that elite public school deserves is you guys turning your back on the youth. And there were several points made where you are thinking 30 years out, and you're already thinking of elite public schools failing in 30 years. So, you're thinking that our youth will fail in the next 30 years, instead of thinking as the investment that you could make in the community for the next 30 years for the future of the city. This city has gone down. As soon as you pass American Canyon, you can tell you've entered Vallejo. So, I am sorry, as a resident and as a property owner here in the city, my kids were born in the city. I am extremely disappointed to see how there's lack of interest and investment in the future of the city. So, I am here as a parent of elite public school scholars, asking you to consider the funding for elite public schools. Please invest in the city. It's not money that's coming out of your pocket. It's not money that's coming out of the city's pocket. It's money granted by the state. Please reconsider your position. Think of the future of Vallejo, and please show us that you don't have any other interests other than the city of Vallejo and the youth of Vallejo. Thank you for the time. I give my 10 seconds back.
That wraps up the caller.
All right. Are there any other announcements or go to the order? Therefore, we will adjourn now at 5:54. Thank you, everyone.